...the difficulties that they're experiencing. We just pray that people will surround them and show them love, Lord. Pray for their protection as it continues to move. We just lift those individuals, Lord, to you. We also are mindful that school is starting. As school starts, what a great opportunity for teachers and administration and all of us to speak into the lives of our young people. So be with our children, be with our young adults, our high school students as they go to school, as we teach them not only about different subjects but also about life and how to be good citizens. We pray for our village council. Each member be with them, watch over them. Thank you for the gifts and talents that you have given them. Just give them wisdom and guidance. And we thank you, Lord, for Mayor Billings and her leadership. Just anoint her, Lord, with your power from on high. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
[Inaudible]
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 I'd like to call this September 3rd, 2019 meeting of our county council to order. [Inaudible]
Williams?
Here.
Reese?
Here.
Cozy?
Yes.
Green?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Has a big picture, will you check? Should we make that? Is that in?
I don't know. I just saw somebody walk past. There he is.
Perfect.
Cozy?
Here.
[Laughter]
Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Williams?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Cozy?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Do we have any citizens' comments on agenda matters only?
We'll move on to the fiscal office.
You have a copy of the August 6th council minutes? If there's no changes, motion to approve, please. Motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Williams?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Cozy?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Do we have any citizens' comments on agenda matters only?
We'll move on to the fiscal office.
You have a copy of the August 6th council minutes? If there's no changes, motion to approve, please. Motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Williams?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Cozy?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Miller?
Same.
Sullivan?
Yes.
You have a list of the bills from August 1st through 27th. If there's no questions, motion to approve. Motion to approve the bill?
Second.
Williams?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Cozy?
Yes.
Green?
No.
Miller?
Yes.
Sullivan?
No.
I'd like to make a comment if I could. So I asked Cindy to grab the prices for putting in an ad in the paper, and I want to remind Council that we directed Cindy to go after the BLO was approved for advertisement. The most expensive is the repository at $1,102.50 for a $5.00 Friday. Now mind you, these are different, but again, you can see the grade and how this is going. The Argo Muse is $566.90, the Suburbanite is $350, and the Review is $405. So based upon what an ad needs to go in and the price, Cindy has done exactly that. So when we do not approve the bills, I would really ask why we're not approving the lines review when we asked her to go with the cheapest price.
I do want to say as well as being cheaper, using a daily paper rather than a weekly has really helped as far as sending meetings up and being able to notify people and having them at later dates. Yes, it would work out well. So I just want to make sure that on record that we are choosing the cheapest paper for the most service that we need to get. So it is the cheapest.
You have a monthly report for July.
If there's no questions, then motion to approve the report, please. Motion to approve the report?
Second.
Williams?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Cozy?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Just one last comment. The energy audit, the company did come out, are working on the numbers to see if it'll work. They sent it off to Florida, and they're having staff in, probably was with themselves. So I don't have any numbers for you yet, but I should have it next week. Go ahead. Thank you, Mayor.
I just have a couple things. First thing, we had a meeting with residents, some of the local farmers and officials to talk about the drainage issues in and around Danbury Glen. After listening to everybody and hearing about the problems, we've decided that we should probably do a study to go over all the drainage calculations, the retention, everything involved in the drainage, and see if there's some things we can have done differently or that they should do extra. We also talked about Congress Lake going into the ditch there. And so two representatives from Stark Soil and Water, and I met with Congress Lake representatives last week, the Stark Soil and Water people looked at the area in question, and we talked to them for a long time. They came back feeling Congress Lake is doing exactly what they need to be doing with the ditch system. And they did offer to help us, if possible, with any future issues, but as of right now, they're doing what they need to be doing, and they didn't feel like there were any issues with them. I did pass on an email from the engineers with a estimate on the price for a study to everybody. Everybody looked at that.
Everybody have a chance to look at this. Any discussion that you feel like you need to move on?
Something you want to further discuss, look into, whatever.
At minimum, I think we ought to take this and streeten the range. We'll set up a meeting.
Any other comments, questions on our meeting we had? Okay. Mr. Miller, the street department had wanted to talk to you guys about something.
Back in March, we had ordered a building in Kansas.
I was saying names could fall apart again.
Anyway, we had ordered a Kansas building or a Kansas cover for, to keep in compliance with EPA regulations and so on. It came in March, and I was planning on putting that up ourselves, this is the street department, and saving the village some money on that. But because of the year that we had with all the rain that we had, and we had several different things, emergencies and so on, a lot of cleanup and all of that, and just our regular work, it isn't going to be feasible for us to put this up. And we also had vacations coming up and that kind of stuff. And so I'd like to ask, I talked to Tom Earp and asked him about perhaps the un-putting the building up, and he said that he would cost $4,000 for them to put it up. I estimated what rental costs we would have in renting a crane per day and also getting a scissor lift or some kind of a self-propelled lift and also using bucket truck from the township. And my estimation was for everything, because, you know, we'd be doing a little bit slower or whatever, it would be between $1,400 and $2,000 for that. And when I bought, when we bought the building, decided to go with that type of building, I asked the manufacturer, whatever, if they do construction, we sell this city on, and asked them how much it would be for them to put it up. They said it would be $10,000 for them to put it up. I got a price from another guy for a different type of building, and he gave me a price for the whole thing. And it seems like it would be around $4,000 or so, I'm estimating for them to do that. So I think that the $4,000 is in the ballpark. I don't think it's excessive. I talked to Tom Earp this morning. He said that they could do it rather soon if we were to go with them. And I have money, I'm not asking for other appropriations, because we have money that ended up not doing things that ended up not needing to be done. So I did some cleaning of the storm sewers and some video taping, and it ended up not being as much as I thought it was going to be. Ended up not doing any striping because of what we did on, we ended up paving the rest of Sunnyside and did all those intersections there and stop locks and stuff that we usually do. It gets heavy traffic there. There is some crosswalks and some stop locks over around Keller that I'm going to do by home. Rather than getting someone out just for those small amounts, I decided not to do that. So I have plenty of money in that. And so it's not, like I say, it's not money that I need to have appropriated. Plus, with the money that I already had to spend for the rental equipment, it brings the price down quite a bit. But I would like to go ahead, we'd like the approval for this so that they can get it. I don't want to go ahead and win without that going up. And because we have it there, I don't want it sitting there. So if Council were to, I'd appreciate approval for that, and that way they can get going on and get up the streets faster.
What about the blocks?
They're, we have the blocks.
The blocks are?
Yeah, that's all ready to go and stuff. So, you know, and, yeah, so it's ready to be put up as far as that goes. And like I say, I talked to Tom, and he said he had time to do it rather soon.
Now, soon when you start?
Well, he said it perhaps asleep, you know. And I said, for sure this month? He said, oh, yeah, for sure this month.
How long would it take?
For him to do it?
Yeah.
I think a couple days, because they have the equipment and stuff to work with that.
Any other questions?
Is there a way we could like to prove this contingent on, I'd like to have something in writing from Earp, the exact, the amount, so that we have some kind of a bill that sure?
You can do it in a motion, not text C. Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Sure. You know, because I just would like something concrete that he can.
I can get ahold of him tomorrow, too, and just tell him, tell Ellis or whatever to write up there. Yeah, that'd be fun. And like I say, if you do not get C $4,000, that would be the limit, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, okay. But I'll get it written.
Yeah. I just would prefer something concrete rather than...
Sure.
Thank you.
Do we want to go ahead and approve up to $4,000, and then $2,000 for the, yeah. So I'll make a motion that we approve.
Now, he won't need the rental.
No, he won't need the $2,000.
Tom has his own rental.
Oh, he just needs the four.
Correct.
$2,000, with respect. All right.
So the difference.
That's, all right. So I'll make a motion to approve up to $4,000 for the, for the construction of this old building that made it across the construction. And that's going to all serve the corporate. Okay. Other side, Cozy?
Second.
Williams?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Cozy?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay, I don't have anything else. Any old business?
Thank you, Mayor. First item this evening is a third reading, ordinance number 1-19.25, commending and replacing ordinance 1-18.12 so as to establish the fee schedule for building, heating, electrical, and zoning permits for the village department.
Sullivan?
Second.
Williams?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Cozy?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes. And then the next item is our first reading. This is resolution number 2-19.19, adopting consent legislation pursuant to revise Code 5521.01 regarding PID number 102351 for the micro-surfacing of State Route 619 from Prospect Avenue to the east corporate limits of the village and declaring the same to be enforced.
Sullivan?
Second.
Williams?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Cozy?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion to suspend rules.
Second.
Williams?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Cozy?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion to pass that one, and see if we take it back to meeting.
Second.
Williams?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Cozy?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes. Okay, and then the only other thing I had was I just need a motion by Council to authorize my office to assert our lien rights against a foreclosure action filed against the Britt family for foreclosure of their property. We have an income tax judgment lien against that property, and we're just asserting our rights in case there's recovery that we get paid. I'll make that a motion, so.
Second.
Close me in. Brett Donald Britt, B.R.I.T.T. Williams?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Cozy?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you.
Engineer?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to go over a couple things, one, Sunnyside. Last, I think, the last point over the change order, and we received money from the county which brought the cost of the paving down to 113, about $113,000, which about, that was about $50,000 from the original, what budgeted for the project. Also, in addition to that, in the meeting before this one, the Board of Public Affairs awarded the Wagner Court to S.E.T. And as a recommendation from the engineering, we would like to see if we can extend the paving for Wagner all the way while doing the construction for the central line, to use that money that we saved from Sunnyside, originally budgeted for Sunnyside, to pay the whole thing, all Wagner, Wagner Court.
From Miller to?
Earl Miller to Shoemaker, I believe. That's basically the end of it. Those are the two things I want to present to you guys, and I get your opinion. The other thing is Market Street is open right, right now, or not the forecast that they, they're done with Market Street, or Market Avenue, and should be open. Received, that it should be there, we received one PDI that was reviewed and approved. That's for 367 Heatherby Lane to connect, that's just the sewer connection, sewer line to the new building. That's all I have, so if you have any question, each one of them.
Going back to the, this is why we're appropriate for.
Right. And it would be going from Stadium to Miller, and then from Miller to Robson.
Right, to Robson.
Oh, Robson, sorry.
Yes. The timeframe, right, that we have with the contractor for the original one is this year, basically by November, by the November 20th to be done.
Okay.
We did not discuss any of that yet for the second part with the contractor. So that's why I'm just discussing it with you guys, so I can start the discussion with the contractor.
I'm just wondering if we could incorporate this into a, into a paving project.
Yeah, but I don't think we have time to handle.
We don't have time to.
Or that much money.
Your question is, is we have, is the timing such that we can push it off till next year?
It will, I think the only reason why we'll bone that route is just because they're already here, they're mobilized, and they have the equipment.
They're already doing nearly half the road with the sewer project.
So the paving either way, I think it's a good opportunity to get, to negotiate a good price from them to finish the whole thing. I think if we leave it till next year, they're just going to give us higher amount.
Okay.
Just even for the mobilization by itself.
Right.
Because these are heavier equipment to bring it here, with the asphalt, do the minter subchaf, if you're already closing the road to do the paving.
I think it's not that big of a...
It seems like it would be cheaper to do it once.
I have a comment about Wagner Court. I don't want to interrupt you, if you have something else stuck on, a second.
You have to come up in the podium, state your name, please, and your address, please.
My name is Jared Malhore. I'm the president of Turbin Escavating.
You're the president of what?
Turbin Escavating.
Okay.
And we were a parent of a bidder on Wagner Court. I knew that, I think we were $12,000 cheaper than set, and we called earlier this week to kind of ask where we were at, and just said, well, come to council meeting, it's going to be a more effective council meeting this week. I personally own another business, $13 million plus your business as well, and we just started Turbin Escavating. We have signed with the local unions, and we also have experience records from those guys. Our mainline operator and vice president has 17,000 plus hours in underground utilities excavation work, and our pipe layer from the local laborers union has over 10,000. He is present here with us today. New businesses start every day. I mean, I started to have a business partner of this, and it's a steel company, and we still run and operate every single day, and I don't understand how, if we met the bid requirements, and we met our bonding, we met everything, how we were not awarded, and how we just not owned up this.
One, if I want to answer it, on the engineering side, the bid wasn't awarded for, it wasn't for the, for the bid documents, it's not such, it's not the only requirement to be the lowest bidder, you know, there are other requirements.
Right.
So you have your product, you met the lowest, but even when, with your bid paperwork that you submitted, you did not even submit any experience. We requested that information from you, you added that recently. We looked through it, and again, you're right, I mean, every day there's a new company, and I have nothing against your experience, but I don't, I can't tell, you have no reference, so I can't recommend you as an engineering to the village saying, hey, I contacted his references, and they said he installed this mini linear foot of central line on the step. I have no, nothing to say that.
Right. On our bid documents, I put a note in that, on the bid documents, saying, hey, we're a new company, this is who we are, gave a little bit back on ourselves.
Right.
And then on the backside, attached the operating hours from it. Because I know this is going to be a struggle starting out in this, is because you don't know who we are.
And now?
But on the flip side of that, is everybody has to start somewhere.
Right.
And if it was, if it was a different kind of project than this Wagner Court, we might have, on the engineering side, if it was a shallow line, has nothing to do with gravity, doesn't have certain challenges, we would have been okay maybe. But with this kind of project, I, on the engineering side, I would like to see somebody that did that kind of work on multiple projects. I sent, I sent my letter of the engineer, to the village and the council, and I'll leave it to them now. This is my recommendation.
And with all due respect, some of that ground over that way is not the most stable.
Right.
It's Pete and Muck, so, I mean, I'm just...
And I'm sorry, if you were told, the BPA, the Board of Public Affairs runs the sewer, they do all the bids and all that.
Right.
The council doesn't do that.
Yeah.
So they, they met before council, and that's where all this took place.
I see.
They're the ones that make the decisions on that. But they do usually get our engineers' recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Yeah, thank you.
Please bid again on another project.
Yeah. So the current, the current request, or the current project is simply from Stadium to Miller?
The, if I am correct, the sanitary line is from Stadium to Miller.
Right, okay.
And then what he's saying is, because it's so bad the rest of the way, from Miller to Robson, he'd like to have done that project.
Yeah, you have an estimate for that, or?
I don't have it yet, no. And again, it depends on talking to the contractor, because I'm hoping that we can work the price with him, because he has a good cost right now, but maybe because we're increasing the amount, it will be a little bit of a leeway. I'm not sure yet. Again, the project just got awarded today, so I don't think we've got that one yet.
So what are you, what are you asking for, from council at this point? I guess that's, are you in an information like this council meeting? Is there enough time to talk?
I guess before he goes and asks, is it up to you guys?
Yeah.
If so, he will continue on.
Eventually, we're always, I mean, anytime we get a discussion on paving, and, yeah, we're going to, you know.
Is there a legal issue with?
Is there going to be more than $50,000? I'm holding up. I mean, we don't have to totally bid $50,000 or $2,000.
If you're just looking for, for us to make a motion for you to pursue it, I'm for that. I will, I will make the motion for you to pursue looking into the...
The main thing is just basically, as you said earlier, we always, we also, we always think about it like this is, you know, Board of Public Affairs, the one is a paving program, and I'm trying to say, these are two projects, I want to try to combine them and run them at the same time.
Yeah, I, I get what you're going at now.
Yeah.
So, just I want to get, you know. So the motion would be is for you to pursue time and labor for the, I mean, yeah, labor and time, cost for the, for extending that paving from Miller to Robson. Okay. Williams?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay, any requests of council members?
I did have a, and this goes, actually goes back to the, to the engineer, the speed bump one, Sunnyside. Where they cut that, or I mean, where they cut the road.
The tube, there's now two.
Yeah, the one's not so bad.
Give them time, just give me a minute.
But the one's not so bad. This, the first one, the first one, cut in there is ridiculous. Is there a way to get them to repair that?
That's not final.
That's not final?
Not final.
Okay.
So this is just a temporary pavement that they put there. They, and we usually will leave it, I'm not sure, I did not drive there, but usually they leave it a little bit higher, so in case it sells all that they have.
The speed bump one, seventy seven.
No.
Where they cut that, or I mean, wood, wood one, where they cut the road.
There's now two.
Yeah, the one's not so bad.
Time was coming.
But the one's not so bad, this, the first one, the first one, cut in there is ridiculous.
Yeah.
Is there a way to get them to repair that?
That's not final.
That's not final?
Not final.
Okay.
So this is just a temporary pavement that they put there. They, and we usually will leave it, I'm not sure, I did not drive there, but usually they leave it a little bit higher. So in case it sells all that they have, it's, you know, it's, it's built in. On top of that, they're gonna mill the whole thing.
Okay.
And put a new surface on top of it. So what they did, instead of putting stone all the way to the surface.
Right.
They put asphalt all the way to the surface and then they're gonna come back and mill the whole thing with a new layers of asphalt.
Okay.
And I made sure I went over it with them again, they said, look, this is not the final. I'm coming again, I said, okay, but he said, I can't do it pieces, I'm gonna finish all my processes and then come and do the whole thing at once.
We have that.
They, you know, they did those two processes, they have the water line, we lift on them that they need to do that.
Okay.
And they, they're working with the environment, environmental issues, so they don't have an exact timeframe.
Okay.
So I don't know exactly when they're.
Before the end of the year?
I didn't hear anything from them, so.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna see Nate come in with a ruined pile truck hitting one of those bumps.
If, let me, I tell you what, I'll follow up with them, if they are not coming back to do the final surface, I'll make sure to, for them to address the, the difference in elevation.
Okay.
At least come and build the pump there, make a level.
Okay.
I'll contact them and just make sure that they will address that and double check the timeframe.
I have a request, I would respectfully ask that we put the La Harre community issue back on council's agenda for the next council meeting to have some discussion on it. It is my fault that I did not have a good copy, I guess, about the community development project. And since I've been given this new copy, I would respectfully ask that we review this and put it back on the agenda to have discussion at the next council meeting.
Thanks for, for the motion?
Yes.
This is to quote what that community?
La Harre community, uh, the, the project that they had that was turned down because of certain criteria and stuff. I would like to have another discussion.
I mean, I know you made that as motion and maybe as a second, I would respectfully just, I'll have to research that issue for council because I don't know if we can do that. Just, you know, kind of precedent, you can't start unwinding all your decisions that you previously has bonded. So I'm not sure we can do that.
Even though I had new information that I hadn't had previously?
Well, I mean, in a court of law, you can follow what we call a J O, J O V, but in our parliamentary process, there's nothing that exists that I'm aware of to do that. The council is charged with voting on what's before them and making a decision. And then if Harley doesn't like the decision, they have due process rights they can exercise. I'm not aware of a council person coming back later and saying, I made a mistake, so we have to unwind legislation. I just, like I said, I just want the opportunity to research that because I don't know if we can do that.
Well, I didn't know we had legislation, I thought it was just granting a, a variance or granting.
Well, it's an act of, it's an act of this body, I don't know if this body can start, just have, after a meeting committee, I don't know, maybe say, I made a mistake, I'd like. I just wanna research that, you still can put it, you can vote for it.
You can put it on the.
Next thing, I'll, by that time I'll have researched. Okay, we have a motion by Green, second by Cozy, Williams?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Cozy?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to the, the council committees, commerce development?
Nothing right now. Thought we should schedule something. Does your calendar's looking next week?
Fine.
You okay?
Okay, I did sit on the link pop up, so.
I can make whatever I want.
Yeah, you're ready, any night next week?
Let's go for Wednesday.
Six fifteen?
Seventy one.
What's the, we're gonna do a street drainage, what's better for you, you know, street drains as soon as six fifteen or seven fifteen? Cause I, it doesn't matter which one I do first?
Six fifteen.
No, I won't. In fact, we'll do six fifteen on the street drains, not a day.
And it's, the topic is the award.
Yeah. Did they make that one or? Street drainage, we know that. We'll get you here in the, since the commerce. Search referring to.
Okay, all right. Finance?
Discuss your required. I think all these overall issues we have that we're discussing, we have budget coming up.
Okay.
Clear up any, but two thousand nineteen budget I can, and.
Other question I had was, we had postponed, or we had sort of put in the calendar, um, discussion about insurance. Is that coming up? Is that done?
That's done.
We, you have what I saw on which one? One of the bills, it was just a continuation?
Green, which I just got notice today of a continuation of our.
Oh, okay, so.
Our, our property and I build.
Okay. How many terms is in May? Oh, it's in May. That's right.
Yeah, so that'll come up again first.
Okay.
Then we'll start looking at that.
All right. So we're looking at a finance meeting. What's best day? I have Thursday open. This weekend, next week. You have one? You have a twelve? Six? Five thirty?
I prefer earlier.
Earlier, five?
Yeah, I can, yes, fine.
Five o'clock? Five o'clock, did you say the twelve, on the twelve? Five o'clock on the twelve?
Personnel?
Nothing.
Planning?
Planning, uh, we have a meeting for Sep, for August. We have a meeting scheduled for September to the, we currently have an item that's actually tabled for Pizzato, we're going back and reviewing, um, he had added, filled in some of the requirements that, for the reason I'm already tabling.
Oh, I saw you said you brought more cars.
Yeah. That's a separate issue.
I, I'm just.
But this is for the, uh, this is for the automotive repair department, so. And that is scheduled for September the tenth at seven o'clock.
Okay, parks and ride, we postponed our meeting from last time. Um, we still need to have a meeting, do you, did you wanna continue on the eleventh, go later that night?
I have the eleventh, who's your one?
All right, do you wanna make, we'll make it for?
Only got seven days right now.
Seven fifteen?
I don't need to take a commerce meeting, I'm going that long, so we can make it seven?
Go to seven, sorry.
I'm sorry.
It's to look at purchasing recycled material, supplies for our front entrance. Okay, safety?
Uh, you know, I'd like to open up some discussion about our police department or, or lack of manpower. We have, right now we've got one full timer down, uh, we're getting ready to lose a part timer and, uh, we've got some shifts that are gonna be hard to, to come to, I'm actually, I'm, you guys. Uh, for what we're paying full timers to work the overtime and part timers to work the extra time. Uh, there's a lot of talk with the chief and stuff, we're thinking maybe if we hired and put on another full timer, that would ease up a lot of the stress of our current officers that we have. It just makes things a lot safer out here, there's lots of times right now, we've got one officer on shift and, uh, that's not safe for him nor if something was to happen like, he's somewhere doing something and something else happens, you gotta take, you know, precedence on which is, which is more important. If he's, if we have one officer on shift, he's in here doing a report, he's gotta be on handcuffs. Whatever's happening outside is gonna continue to happen because he can't just leave it that well, so. We're just kinda thinking maybe, chief's recommendation possibly that maybe a full timer, bringing one on, is gonna just make that better for everybody. Aside from other people's opinions and what they thought, and, and chief here, he can definitely give some, some better facts of that, but this is pretty much a spreadsheet of our schedule, or their schedule, I'm sorry. And, uh, the red ones are the ones that try to compensate the bill.
So the red ones are the open ships?
Uh, well, if there's not a badge number on it, those are the ships currently there. Our part timer, he's got, he'll be leaving this week and, uh, that will open up board.
We did hire a part timer two weeks ago.
Yeah.
But she's obviously still in training and she's writing something at this point.
Chief, anything to?
Who's your part, who's your part time and full timers?
Uh, is it not listed on there? Um. Full, 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 part, full, full, part, part, full, full, part, part, part. You remember? Yeah.
Seven full time?
Yes. At one point in time, I don't, long before my time, council had allowed that, that it could be financing from eight full timers. Currently we have seven, um, and we're short one, so technically we have six. So I don't, I don't know where that's at in history, but there's something back in the past that stated that.
The manpower is.
Our manpower ordinance says we can have up to eight.
Okay, okay, sorry. That's what I was gonna ask.
We'll allow it.
Is it allowed?
So we would have the ability to do that if we allocate the money to support that. Just an example, tomorrow we'll get the cruisers and we're getting all the, our cameras into the cruisers, so our lieutenant will be with them, so he can, he's gotta learn how to troubleshoot these things and, and figure them out as well, so. Chief will be the only officer on duty in the village on ship patrolling. Normally, our injured officer would also be on during the week, but since he's not here, that will leave two on with one preoccupied, so to speak.
Can I help you guys to understand it a little bit better?
Hope so.
Is that a yes?
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
It's actually, uh, tomorrow on Thursday, I'll be the only police officer on duty. If you look at the schedule, this, this, the top was the current schedule, there's thirty seven, full shifts that need to be filled, you look at the purple and you look at the gray, that's when officers are required to work off what their normal shift would be, so. Fully one third of the shifts that we, we have, uh, need filled. And we are requiring people to work, we are, we are, uh, so you may not have a day off, you may not, uh, you may have to work sixteen hours, we may be scheduling you for twelve hours, we're doing a lot of that, you know, we got football games coming up. I don't know how we're gonna manage it as, as, as councilor Miller said, we're losing a part timer. If you look at, if you look at Morrison's names on third shift, uh, he's a busy individual, uh, as a part timer and Saturday will be his, or Friday will be his last day. The, uh, the yellow and the screen that you see with nothing in, uh, is, especially on Bauer's name, is an indication that, uh, part timers don't get vacation or sick leave, yet there are times when they have commitments that they have asked to be off, so we really don't have a designation to a part timer, not dependent to work, but we mark it on the schedule so that we know we can't compel that person to come in and work those shifts. You know, if, if you look at tomorrow's schedule, it, it looks like we have two people on the road, we don't put a, you know, a, an overtime shot in there because we know we're gonna be busy. Frequently, uh, we're going to Canton on day shift, uh, we have to take our traffic citations down there, we have to take evidence down there. In fact, whatever, whatever is operational necessity, it has to be in on day shift. That's what I'm doing to the schedule, you see, uh, you see that there are generally three people on day shift. Uh, we also have a significant amount of walk-in traffic and phone call traffic from our residents, they're expecting, you know, information to do reports here, there's, there's overriding of stuff. Uh, but, but the reality is that, uh, you know, our, our officers are starting to suffer a little bit of burnout. And I don't see an end in sight probably this year to, to the significant amount of overtime shifts. And as was pointed out, you know, some time ago, the authorized strength for full-time officers was raised to eight. And I think that was a visionary kind of thing from, from people that were here, maybe some of you, but maybe not all of you, uh, recognizing that we are a growing bit of the village and, uh, and we certainly are. And, uh, and I can tell you that if we add an additional person, I would be able to cut back on some of the part time hours so that. I've talked to both the mayor and the fiscal officer about the finances of this and, and, uh, there is, there is an expense associated with it, it's not as high as you would think, given that we, there is an offset with the part time hours, but we would still need our part time people. You know, the reality is, you know, with, with eight people, we could have better deployment of personnel, we'd be safer and we could do better jobs of enforcing the laws and keeping the youth safe. And that's our mandate, so what I'm asking you is, could you please consider allocating additional money to the police department, authorizing me to hire a full-time person? If, if you, if you do that tonight, we'd probably still be at least a month before we could get somebody here because we don't have a, we have a bull pad where they're waiting to come in. And a full-time person would likely have to have a, a physical and, uh, and other pre-employment things that take time, uh, before they would be able to come to work. And then once they get here, uh, they would probably have to have a little acclamation period of training, big law, FTO, uh, field training officer, uh, time, so. I can tell you this, you know, Lakes football's about to start and I don't know how we're gonna be able to accommodate this year. Uh, we're certainly gonna try, I'm, you know, we have, we have a great team of people back there, everybody works hard, but this, this sheer numbers make it perhaps not possible to, to muster all the officers that they would like for all the games. So. An additional person would be a huge help. But ultimately it's your decision. When you, when you see that there's two badge numbers, like, uh, if you look down on the twentieth of August on second shift, avenue shift, you see seven thirty eight, seven thirty nine, that's because they've been scheduled each for four hours. If you see that there's just one number in the middle, that officer's working eight hours, if you see one number, like you see one on the third shift, seven forty four, seven forty four, those guys are only working.
Thank you very much.
Those guys are only working till three o'clock in the morning, so from three AM until seven AM, there's only gonna be one officer on duty. And, uh, councilor Miller is correct, we, when we're down to one person, we do have to make a priority type decision and if. And if we can't respond, you're going to probably have to wait for the sheriff's office, because I can tell you right now, Union Town is in a similar position to Bureau with their, with their manpower. They're struggling to make sure that they have enough people. In fact, where they have one on, we might have one on, and oftentimes, our guys over there and their guys over here. That's, that's how it's been as of late. Which again, is not something we want to advertise. We want, we want everybody to stay safe, and we want to provide a high level of service to citizens of Pembroke Spect, but, um, we only have so many people, and, um, one of them, as, as, as councilor Miller said, is incapacitated probably for the rest of the year. I can assure you that if, if you do authorize one additional person, when he, when that officer comes back, if, if he comes back, when he comes back, uh, we will have a, a new schedule that, that properly deploys the officers and protects the village. It's not like this is a temporary problem, it's been a problem for a while. In fact, the most, most of the recent budget hearings, we, we pledged to do additional personnel, but I believe before it got to you, it got, that got exonerated off the request because, uh, the fiscal officer and the mayor and all of them had time, um, so that they, they didn't, they didn't signal it forward that way. So, so just so you know, it's not the first ask, but it's the first time. Our departments have been so significant that I've actually, you know, we're seeing tired police officers, we're seeing frustration. And that's, that's really not how our department's operated for the last several years. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Then I would make that as a motion to allocate monies, to allow scouts to allocate monies to add a full-time officer. Turbule's program.
Do we not have somebody that doesn't need that?
Here for a full-time officer? Full-time officer benefits?
Yeah.
Well, it's hard to say, you know, whether it's family insurance or single insurance. Probably around $63,000 for the year, for a year. That's including a little overtime, about 30 hours of overtime. The offset, we're discussing with the chief, probably offset about a thousand hours in your, your part-time, part-timers. That'd be about $20,000, so looking in the $40,000 range would be the additional cost for the village.
Is there an opportunity that some of the part-time, are you comfortable time?
Well, we have to, uh, see who's available. I mean, first of all, a lot of our part-timers have, are seasoned veterans, uh, so we have to pay them at the highest rate to come in, and I don't know that they'd be interested in working afternoons or midnights, which is where this person would be. So, I mean, it's possible, but, and, and they already, they all know, trust me, that I'm here today asking this, and, uh, and a couple of them have said, well, it's just too early for me, or it's too late for me, or, so I don't, I don't know that we would be hiring in-house for that position. I can tell you this, if we had a full-time opening, there would be talent that would be interested in coming on.
That's been part of our problem, we had a hard time finding part-time people. Well, just by the numbers, you can tell you're short. Oh, we have now, you're short. I'll send you a motion.
Just clarifying, you're currently with six full-time? Well, we have seven that we're paying.
Okay.
We have six that are working.
Okay.
One injured.
One injured.
Correct.
You have how many part-time?
Right now, we have five part-time, we're going to lose one. And a couple of our part-time, um, are not able to work the, the scheduled times that we have, they have other jobs.
Right.
So, I mean, right now, they're, they're all stepping up pretty good, but generally speaking, we, we have some that work only Sunday.
Right.
You know? And, and that works out for us, under those circumstances, but we, we are, we're in pretty desperate shape right now. I wouldn't become an ask in this, uh, otherwise.
How many part-timers do we have?
Five.
How many? But how many do, what, how many do we have out, or how many does the salary ordinance say we can have?
We changed it a few years ago, it's 6,000 hours.
6,000 hours.
We don't go by how many part-time.
Doesn't matter how many you have.
We, we would have never been able to hire a Joan Bauer that helped us out with that murder case if we hadn't flexed the, uh, the number to hours.
Yeah.
And it really, it really works out better if we have.
It's, it's still a maximum of 27 hours a week for a part-timer?
Well, no, right now, we're, we're blowing up.
I know, I realize that, but ideal is that.
Yeah.
Ideal is it be a 27?
Our, our goal is a 24-hour work week for the part-timers.
Okay.
That's our goal.
That's what I was trying to.
So we have a motion by councilor Miller to allocate one is to add a full-time officer. And we have a second by councilor Reese. Williams?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Cozy?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to add that to the.
For? Finance.
Yeah, for. To look into, uh, an eight. You're down one.
He'll be up one, he'll be at eight once your full-time comes.
Yes, yes, we will be.
Oh, that'll put you at eight?
Well, well, we're, we're making the assumption that our injured officer is going to get a full return to work.
Okay.
So it'd be yes.
Okay, so that gives you the seven active.
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 Yes, and then when he would come back, hopefully, beginning of next year, we would be at eight, and we could, we could do some, some very nice scheduling, and that's when we would be able to cut back on the, on the part-time hours.
I'd still like the decision. I, I think we're covered, we were talking about, about.
Yeah.
Sewer rates. We do have, we do have an issue. Sorry, I know you want to know. You guys want to know the meeting. We have had some problems with multiple people, but one in particular, turning in their meter readings. We have no recourse in our sewer use handbook or code or anything right now, since that's fairly new that we have meters, to put either a penalty or anything on those.
So we, are we saying that the meter reading is not?
Well, what happens, no, what happens, the people that have meters, the businesses that have meters, they take a picture of the reading every month, and in order to stay on the meter, they send it in to Lori, who's the clerk. This has to happen by a certain date so she can process all the sewer bills. It's not happening. It's continual. We keep getting late, phone calls, emails, more phone calls, and we're just, we need some kind of penalty on there to kind of get these people.
So you're saying without it, we don't send it?
Yeah, we, well, we can't do any of the bills, this is part of her process to do all of it.
The commercial bills, it's a honor system where you stop, we don't have a.
Oh, we need a picture of it, yeah.
Meter reader, we don't have a meter figure on staff.
Most of them do pretty well, there's just a few, and like I said, one is really thin.
She's going to instruct you to estimate if she has to.
Yeah, I was.
Like the other company.
We have, I mean, obviously, by now, we have the ability to estimate an average over twelve per, you know, twelve periods or.
Yeah, we could do, I mean, we have options, we could impose a penalty, we could impose a, a 12-month default average. If we can do that, what we need to do is change the sewer use code, which I can do if you instruct me on what we want done. So you just have to.
We've not had a lot of these before, so we don't have anything in there to him.
Yeah, I would, rather than have another meeting, I would just simply suggest that have you modify the sewer use code to, to average a 12-month plus a 20% penalty. Or a 20%, 20% above the 12-month average.
That'll encourage them to.
Plus average plus 20%.
Yeah, average plus 20%.
That's, that's right.
Yeah.
So that's a motion.
I will make that.
That one we.
I will make that. Is that?
That's.
Yeah.
I can draw that up in a while, that for next council.
That saves us a meeting.
Second.
I'm sorry, there was a motion by Sullivan, a second by Green?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Cozy?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay, and last, well, street drainage.
So, street drainage, looking at finances being on the, at five, five o'clock on the 12th, set a meeting for, how long do you think the financial takes, Scott?
I would give us 45 minutes.
An hour? So, I'd like to set it up for, I'd like to set it up for six o'clock on the 12th. Yeah, I forget, it's Cozy, Green.
It's the 3:15.
6:15.
Oh, yeah, he can't be here.
Oh, 6:15?
We'll take a short break.
Set it off, six, so 6:15. We'll set it for 6:15. Items for discussion would be, um, I'd like to discuss, uh, street paving ahead of the budgets, or in, along with the budgets. Dan Barry Glenn, um, okay. Dan Barry Glenn, the, um, talk about the issues and whether they have the engineer proceed with this. And then also, I'd like to talk about, um, by that, that, by that point, Nate should have pretty good progress on the building. So we'll talk about progress on the building. And if, if available light poles, it may not be available if it's there, we'll talk about that.
We've got some busy.
Yeah.
Anything else?
That's it, I think.
Okay, zoning.
We need to have a meeting. What's Monday the 16th? Okay, you tell me when you can. Because we can't have a public hearing until we have this meeting. To be able to set a public hearing. It shouldn't be a long meeting. Is this weekend any better?
Should we go to time again?
Okay. Want to do Tuesday at 6:15 to 10?
I was going to say, you want to do it before the next meeting, or?
Would like to, but I, I, if we can't, we can't. I mean, it's simple as that.
Set it up for the time?
Okay, so we'll have a zoning book meeting to finish up, the zoning book, that's set for Tuesday, the 10th, at 6:15. That's all I have.
Thank you. Um, any miscellaneous business? Any citizens' comments, not on agenda items? Okay.
Make a motion for your chair.
Williams?
Yes.
Reese? Cozy?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Miller?